I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, September 8th at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held in the Harvard Hearing Room, Town Hall, I'm sorry, Town Hall, One Metcalf Square in Winthrop. It is also being televised on WCAT-TV. May I have a roll call please?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Here.
Ms. Petry?
Yeah.
Mr. Puritton?
Present.
Ms. Berry?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here. Please rise. Ms. Berry, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have called Tommy.
Yes, hi.
Please.
Hi, my name's Kelly Pettis. My son just started kindergarten this year and so far it hasn't been a great experience for me. I had bought my home three years ago at 956 Shirley Street under the assumption, well from the realtor, not assumption, that it was included in the transportation. I have neighbors to the right of me that ride the bus and neighbors to the left. So this year we were denied for transportation after me telling my son for a year that he was going to be riding this bus. So there's been a lot of inconsistencies with the mapping system. I brought my neighbor here, one of the people who does ride the bus. He actually mapped the route out in his car today in the odometer and it is over two miles. However, the system that they're using is mapping MapQuest and Lisa knows because we've been discussing for almost three weeks now, their system is mapping it under two miles. But any system that I've done, a walking distance route portal to portal, which is what the Department of Education requires, maps it over two miles. So I didn't know, like Darren went today in his car because I'm like, okay, we've got to figure this out. Why are they receiving the mapping directions as one point, I think you quoted me today eight-four, the other day it was 1.98. I've received driving directions printed as a PDF from Lisa even though it states that it is a safe walking route. So I'm just like really confused as to the inconsistencies. And then as my neighbor's on the right at 15 Brewster, their address actually mapped out at 2.0 today because I actually stood in front of their door and did the walking directions. So I just really am hoping we can try and figure this out or figure out where I have to go next to solve this issue.
Okay, thank you for the comment. The neighbors here, I just for clarification, are they next door to you or behind your house?
They're on Brewster. They're behind me, yeah.
Okay. This is an issue that's generally decided by the administration. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention and we can certainly discuss and look into and try to understand if there's anything that can be changed or would be done. But I know that we start to comply with the state's policies and that's...
Yeah, well, I don't think that's what we're doing though because it's not like she sent me driving directions, but that's not what the state, the Education Department suggests. It's portal-to-portal walking directions. And I think the MapQuest system is the oldest mapping system and the least accurate and the least up-to-date.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. We will definitely follow up and take this under advisement. Okay.
Hi, my name is Darren Green. Hi, Darren.
Please.
I live just around the corner from Kelly. And today I downloaded the MapQuest app and whether I did walking instructions or driving directions and I did it on my odometer and I went from like right outside her door right through the front door within 40 feet and it was over two miles. So just trying to figure out, like I'm here on behalf of her to figure this out because her child and my child are, you know, ride the bus together. And so it'd be great if they continue to do that. Just wondering like what are the next steps when there are inconsistencies with the things that we're receiving from, you know, from you guys, like what we see from every metric that we're able to do ourselves, like this doesn't seem to make sense. Nothing's like, nothing's driving correctly here. And so like what do we need to do next to figure this out? So like what's the process? Like, I don't know, you'll like answer that question, but like what is the process to try to figure out when there's inconsistencies like this?
And unfairness.
This is a process that's decided by, it's ultimately determined by the administration. We can look into it, you know...
I guess what that means?
We can look into it and ensure that all of our policies are being followed. I can't give you an answer tonight because I need to, we need to look into it more thoroughly.
Okay. I say we do receive an answer, what would be the next steps? Let's say the answer's not in our favor, like what would be the next step?
The Department, filing a complaint with the Department of Education, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Tommy, tonight I think we could go. Thanks.
May I have a motion to approve the WISW 26-4 in the amount of $114,214.21. Motion. Any discussion? May I have a roll call please? Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Puritton?
Yes.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for pay-per-warrant SBW 26-4 in the amount of $891,256.74.
Motion. Second. Any discussion? Hereina, may I have a roll call? Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Stay.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Puritton?
Yes.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the Winthrop Special Olympics request to use the facilities and along with that, may I have a motion to waive the rental fees?
Motion. Second. Any discussion? Hereina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or opposition? Motion passes. Homeschool applications, so superintendent's report first, so please.
So thank you. Fire drills are up and running in every building. I'm sure you have heard students come home and talk about them. We do three a year, so we're continuing to do those. If there is a call to the building, I'd much if you know whether it's fire or police, I do call Jen, call the chair and let her know. Oftentimes, if it involves a building that somebody is representing that building, I'll also call them. So be assured that if it's something other than one of our usual drills, the chair will know and then we make a decision if the whole committee needs to know depending upon the situation. September 24th is a district-wide PD, so that's a half-day for all schools, so I wanted you to be aware of that. The e-bike ongoing saga in town, so working with Chief Goodwin and Mary Prisapi, I know they did a presentation at the town council meeting, so we spoke about that presentation and I thought it would be helpful, as did they, to get that same flyer that they used and share with the committee and have had put out on social media and in the transcript and otherwise for us to share that with our parents and encouraging our parents to really read through it and see where helmets are required. And we're experiencing lots of bikes at the school, e-bikes as well, so talking to parents about making sure students have helmets on. We're going to do a little more discussion on it. You know, students riding e-bikes to school without helmets and then parking them on school property. So the school property piece, we can have some discretion over. We can't force the parents to enforce the helmets, but we are going to have further discussion about that and perhaps only allow e-bikes, any type of electric bike or electric scooter that's on the school property that the student would need to come with a helmet on and put a helmet on their head on school property as they need. Also encouraging the regular scooters and regular bikes to continue to wear helmets. They're not by law required, but certainly we would like to see that for safety precautions. So we're going to stay on top of that. Families are being notified if they weren't on Friday, they'll get a copy of that flyer in the next principal notification. So we're staying in touch with the Police Department and if we have some chronic offenders, we certainly will help speak with kids about the importance of keeping their heads protected and following the rules of the road. So that's super important. We want to just make sure that it's not just sitting at the town council level, it's also matriculating into the schools. Last, this past week, I was invited to and attended a dedication in the honor of Bob D. Felice and that was through the Memorials Committee of the Town. A plaque was unveiled recognizing the stadium, which is still Miller Field, but we now have the stadium also titled Miller Field at the Coach Bob D. Felice Stadium. It was nice for me to go, obviously I know the D. Felice family very well, but it was also good to see a lot of people from our past, past coaches, past teachers. Mr. Rosen was there, he was my 10th grade biology teacher. I didn't ask him to remember what my grades were, but he was there. A lot of past athletes, a lot of dignitaries. I think it was very nice, but very emotional for the D. Felice family and a very well-deserved recognition of not just what Mr. D. Felice had given to the students of the Winthrop Public Schools over several years, but also what he had given back to the town in terms of helping raise our children to understand that, you know, school is very important and so is athletics, but more important is being a good person and always believing in yourself and always trying to be better tomorrow than you were yesterday. And that was one of the real claymases. We had some great speakers. President Letery was able to speak, Dale Donbas spoke, Mr. Turco spoke and also...
Who's that?
Who's that?
Michael, of course, Michael.
Bobby.
And Bonnie DeGoreau. All had wonderful things to say about Coach D. Felice and all the accolades that he has had in the past. It was interesting to hear Michael talk about, you know, there's an actual shrine at Bentley, a big shrine of Mr. D. Felice there and how important all of those things were, naming a street after him and a baseball field and a hockey rink. But for Michael and the family having something in their community that he was so tied to, that they were so tied to and are still so tied to, to be able to see that is heartwarming to all of them. So it was a really nice event. The next negotiation date we have with the teachers is a joint session and that joint session is with the teachers, ESPs, nurses and secretaries. That is on September 29th at 6 o'clock. All of the negotiations for those four units are open to the public. It will be at the high school, as of right now, it's in the high school library. I'll get some more information as to whether or not we need to change the location before we post it. We may do it in the auditorium depending upon what the union group feels is going to be the participation level and I'll get some feedback from the committee as well. So I'll keep you up to date on that. Couple of things about the schools. Friday, September 12th, we'll start with the GFB, is the Fall Ice Cream Social, it's being very well advertised to the families who are invited to go to that at the Golden Fort Banks. September 17th, the PTO is having a 20% fundraising event at 90 Degrees, so anyone who wants to eat at 90 Degrees, great food, I recommend the sliders, they're very good. Please go to that and that benefits money that goes to the PTO that in turn comes back to our schools. And then September 18th, the GFB is Curriculum Night. It's an adult-only event and it's from 5:30 to 7 o'clock, certainly clearly advertised for the families of that school. The Cummings School is emphasizing school safety during drop-off and pickup. They're sort of becoming the loop almost and this past few, some families created their own loop, which the Police Department was not overly in favor of. I heard that through the police scanner, so they're working on that with Andrea. And, you know, again, it's about slowing down, paying attention. We have lots of little ones so excited to come into school that they're not often looking when they're coming up from the basketball courts and going into the school. So for parents, if you can please be patient, I've always said, I know how inconvenient it is to be in the traffic. As a mother of 34 years now, I can tell your kids are in inconvenience forever, but the traffic can be tough on the folks, so please try to be careful around that. September 17th, the Afton Cummings is having their Curriculum Night, that's from 6 to 7:30. There'll be detailed information at Curriculum Night about school policies and classroom expectations, so encouraging all our parents if they can to attend. Remind us to families to send their quarry forms in across the board, any parents that are thinking about volunteering, going on field trips. The last-minute quarry rush is not fun and, you know, students get disappointed if their parents cannot go, but it is a school policy for the safety of students, we have to have that ahead of time. We have a really cool thing, Girls on the Run. We've done this before at the middle school and we have that program this year being sponsored by a group that's coming in to do it, not necessarily for the school, but taken up by a group of parents who wanted to have this particular program. So it's a fun, evidence-based program that inspires participation, participants to recognize their inner strength, increase their level of physical activity, imagine their possibilities and confidentially stand up for themselves and more importantly or equally as important to stand up for others. So I know I'm going to forget somebody, but Leslie Strong was one of the key leaders of this and had worked with Mrs. O'Leary to have permission to not necessarily utilize the inside of the school, but bathrooms are a priority when we're running, so to start it up on the grounds of the school and the kids will participate, run aft and run after school. And then the first practice is Wednesday, the 17th, practices are an hour and a half. The celebration is a 5K that's going to be held on Boston Common on November 16th, which would be cool for our kids. Anyone who signs up, families have links to read about Girls on the Run and to look at the event and see if they want to have their children engage in it. So thank you to the whole group of people that put that together. Leslie is the one that I spoke with directly, but I know there were others involved. With the middle school, Thursday, September 11th, is their Back to School Night, Curriculum Night, and that's from 6 to 8. That's being advertised to the parents as well. And I'm repeating myself, but it's a half a day on September 24th for all schools. High School's Curriculum Night is the September 16th, from 6 to 8. The parents, it's a little different than the middle school one, so if you went to a middle school one and you feel like it's the same building, you're actually going to do something a bit different. Families follow the student's schedule and go into classes for about 12 minutes each. The teacher reviews the syllabus and presents information about curriculum, policies, procedures and expectations. So it is, you know, it is somewhat different in which you're going through your child's complete schedule. Just a quick update on enrollment. We have enrolled, and enrollment in month of September is not necessarily what it's going to be by October 1st when we have to submit that data. I can tell you after eight and a half years of doing this now, month-to-month enrollment is not the same. But, you know, right now we have 2,010 students actively enrolled or in the process with the understanding that they will be enrolled as soon as some additional documents are given to the school. When we get closer to the finishing the report that we'll do for October 1st, I'll have a nice detailed report for you so you can see what that enrollment looks like. Now, starting to prepare that report, I started to look at enrollment as sort of a sit-down thing to do and not just kind of a request to look at it for a certain year, but I went back to the 11, 12, sorry, the 12, 13 school year. And at that point, we had 1,975 kids in school. And then I looked at the pattern, sort of what was that pattern from that point in time to now and trying to figure out what have we done during those timeframes that would affect enrollment or what might be happening in the world that would affect enrollment during that time. So I've looked at the COVID era and saw the large drop in enrollment during COVID. Some kids went onto homeschool plans, some kids went onto virtual school plans, some kids went to private schools for a year or two. And so some of, those are some of the patterns I'm seeing. I need to dig a little bit deeper into the pattern of residency. And when we started, really, school choice had sort of drifted away from us and we were no longer a school choice community. And then what did we do from that point forward with residency? And if you recall, at one point we were checking you just as you enrolled and then we found some flaws in our own practice in terms of what we were looking at and consistency of practice for all of our families. So we started to tighten up residency and have some really more well-laid-out protocols to make sure that we were equitably entering kids into school or equitably denying students' entrance into school. And then at one point in my career, we did the re-registration, but we only did it for third grade and we did it for one grade for one year. How that, might that have affected enrollment? Then we started doing it in grades three, five and nine and then, you know, I'm sorry, three, six and nine. So looking at what enrollment looked at at that point and then bringing it all the way up to this year. I think this has been our best year in terms of staying on top of, you know, kids registering for schools and making sure that we are following a very consistent process and that we've done, where in this whole mix have we started to throw in in-home residency checks and how has that affected us? So when you look at residency, it's not easy to say the ebb and flow is all. We've had a lot of kids leave this year, you know, this year was a slow year, a fast year, there's all kinds of factors that weigh into it. But it is interesting when you have all those outside factors that you know of and kind of putting those in place and seeing how that might have affected, you know, what our enrollment looks like. So we've tightened up quite a bit in making sure students who go to school here do live here and that's for the purpose of, you know, being respectful of everybody's tax dollars. And also somewhat out of desperation to make sure our class size stays where we need it to, so not having to add teachers to keep our class size at a reasonable amount. And then, you know, obviously we worry about space. So right now, you know, we have 2,010 students tomorrow, it could be 2,015 and the next day it could be 2,001. But I think monthly, to kind of keep in track of that will be helpful for the committee to understand where we're at. And October, the October 1 data is super important because that really correlates to our Chapter 70 money. And so we are, we have a new student information system, Power School, which can do some incredible things that I've been doing and Laurie's been doing and principals have been doing by hand for years. So I think what we're going to see with our indicators such as students with special needs, EL students, homeless students, students in foster care, all of that information can now be kept in one student information system, which directly ties to the Department of Education's data. So the Department of Education connects to that portal and pulls that information and mine, and that information translates to money that returns to the school. So it's been a mission that we've had to get that information really, really accurate and making sure we're capturing every student that we have and identifying those students appropriately because each sort of category of students has a dollar taken from the state of Massachusetts that is in the federal government that is provided to us. So I really think that's a positive in terms of our growth and development and what has been happening in the schools to do our best and our due diligence to make sure that we are maximizing our income and not really overlooking anything. So a lot of that cleanup has been helpful to us, you know, in terms of, you know, just the funding that we receive. So I'm very pleased with that. A lot of, a lot of hands make like work. Moving to Power School has been somewhat of a nightmare. Anytime you move in the information system, it is a really unreasonable and unimaginable amount of work to get all of that data translated. It's not a simple, here's what we used last year and the new company pulls that information, you basically rebuild your system from the ground up. And that has taken us a year and, oh, yeah, closer to two years to get that done. But I do think it's going to be a tremendous benefit to the school district in the long run. And that is my superintendent report.
Fantastic. Homeschool applications. Yes, you have a copy in Friday. We have seven additional applications tonight, two for third graders, one for fourth grader, one fifth grader, one ninth grader and two 11th graders, all of which are returning homeschool students who submitted all of their plans and I recommend accepting all of those plans this year. Can I have a motion to approve the homeschool applications as presented?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Hereina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or opposition? Motion passes. New hires?
Yes, personnel. So I am very happy to report that we have found a chairperson, a special education chairperson for the Winthrop Middle School. The middle, although we filled a position at the Cummings School, in the same year we lost the position, the person who was maintaining the position at the middle school. It's a super important position. That person needs to know special education law, needs to understand how to interact with families, needs to do program evaluations of the programs that are in the school, needs to do staff evaluations. And anytime you lose an administrative position or can't fill a position like that, the workload gets put upon other people. But I think more importantly, the attention to that particular position gets fractured if four or five different people are doing the work. And that fracture directly translates to parents and families not feeling supported because there's too many sort of cooks in the kitchen. Our parents need to have one person to talk to about their students', you know, needs in the school, especially when it comes to special education. The case loads for each school building is close to 100, close to 100 students per building in terms of students with IEPs. That means, you know, a bare minimum, 100 IEP meetings, probably, you know, half of that is a three-year reevaluation with testing. It means three sets of progress reports that need to be written times 100 to each family. And the timelines, adhering to the timelines are super important, the sole purpose of keeping us out of trouble with the Department of Education, other Bureau of Special Education Appeals. So we're thrilled to have Nathan Lamar. Nathan comes to us with quite a background in administration, was looking for a change in venue, happened to know somebody within the Winthrop Public Schools who is an administrator, who notified him that there was an opening and I don't know what Brian Curley did, but he ended up, you know, being able to hire him and convincing him that the Public Schools is the best place in the world to work. And so now we will take it from there with him, but we're pleased to have him. We also have another, an ESP, new ESP that filled a position. I'm very happy about this as well. Kelly Lowe is a former special ed teacher who taught with me in Saugus Public Schools. She holds a master's degree in education and special education. She was a great special ed teacher. She worked under Laurie and I in Saugus. She's taken time off to raise her daughters. She lives in town, she lives downtown. And so she's coming back and stepping back into the world of education in a slow fashion. She wanted to start off as an ESP, but I think her expertise and her sort of ground and understanding of students with special needs and integrated preschool will be a benefit to the school. And Donna Carullo has been a lot, has been a substitute here, a faithful substitute for us in various buildings and we were able to offer her a position as an ESP at the Cummings School, so we were happy with that and that was an open position that Donna has put. We have no, no resignations, we have no retirements and at this point, we do not, we have no postings.
Wow, fantastic. Under unfinished business, we have the policy updates. Do you have a policy updates?
I don't have one yet. We gave an update on the subcommittee, yes, last, the last meeting. Go ahead.
I don't have anything to share.
So Laurie can speak a little bit about...
Yeah, so I made the changes that we talked about last time that you had recommended to the book meeting that was approved at the last meeting. We put everything in, submitted to MASC, so the last thing to do is to vote the whole manual in full. Yep. And then we'll be able to go now. Is there any reason we can't do that tonight? Patty? We can continue to individually take up any policies at any time and switch them out and it'll just all be much easier for Patty and online and... Okay.
And for families, that was my biggest hope with this whole thing is to be able to have a family pop on the MASC website, find Winthrop and look up a policy of their own as opposed to calling, getting frustrated, having us copy something and send it to them. And then once it's voted in full, the committee can continue, the MASC will alert us when there's any state or federal changes in the law, which is key to having it in the system because we wouldn't otherwise know that until we looked for it. So that's key, but the committee administrators, anybody who has a question on any policy at any time can bring that policy back. We can amend it at any time, the school committee can. And once you vote any type of an amendment or change in any policy, it then gets uploaded to the MASC website and adjusted on that basis.
Fantastic. With that understanding, may I have a motion to approve the... All right, fantastic. With the understanding, may I have a motion to approve the full package of policy updates as presented to us by the subcommittee and amended as requested? Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Laurie, thank you for your help with the policy subcommittee.
2.5 years ago.
It's a long time. It's going to be a nice project to wrap up.
And just as a, as a side help because, you know, the whole COVID era and SRF funds is sort of like, you know, a lot of this kind of block. We utilize SRF funds in the way they're supposed to be utilized as a one-time purchase to invest in this, which will now benefit not just the school committee, but the entire, you know, population of people who are of any interest in the school. I jumped on that to look at policies of other schools before when we met our founder, that was this thing. So it really is another plus for the school district to have that. So thank you for making that commitment 2.5 years ago.
Yes. Excellent. And given the, the size and the magnitude of this particular vote, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
It's Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Leteri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Pirritto?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Like a high five?
It's been a long time.
We should have a celebration.
It's been a long time.
Suzanne, we still have the committee, remember?
Yeah.
I'm remembering like the discussion about whether we should spend that money on that kind of thing. Yeah. Public relations.
Public relations. Check and see if we can put them in here. I know that I have been attending, I don't see any public relations anywhere, but one of the things I can report is I've been bouncing around and attending different events at the schools. And just the, the buy-in from the kids has been great so far this year, whether it's an activity that the kids are doing at the school, whether it's something they're playing like Girls on the Run, whether it's a football game or getting ready for the next drama production. It's amazing how kids can shut off all summer and then just, poof, they turn right back on. And the staff as well. I think having those couple of days, those first few days where we were getting automated radio and making, getting everybody's schedules done correctly and getting all the paperwork that we needed done and then having that little break over Labor Day weekend allowed us to do what we think is super important, which is to front-load education starting right away in September and being able to just push that right through until people's brains begin to shut off sometime in early June. So I appreciate the calendar because that has allowed us to do that. The feedback has been great. Feedback at the end, middle of June was everybody was psyched, wow, we have so much extra time and this is great. The feedback in August at the park or at, and some of the events I was at was, okay, we're ready. Like the parents were ready, kids were ready, staff was ready to come back. So I think the committee made a great decision on the calendar for this year.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any other public relations? See, may I have a motion to go into executive session with the, and the intent is that we will adjourn immediately after executive session.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Leteri?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Pirritto?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
We are in executive session.